Good evening, welcome everyone to the, uh, what do we got here, April seventh?
Motion to open the hearing.
We can open the hearing first.
Yeah, open the hearing.
The motion for the hearing. Second.
Okay.
All available, alright.
Alright. Okay. And so.
It is the fourth.
You have the date of the seventh. We're reading off of that. Thanks, Rick. Welcome everyone to the April fourth meeting of the board of bills. Um, do we have to do anything like you before we decide?
No, we're all set.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, can I get a motion to waive the reading on, oh, we got one sixty Maple Street.
Okay.
Do we have the reading?
All available.
Alright.
Alright.
Fantastic. Who is here representing one sixty? One up.
Can you turn it up a little bit so we can hear you a little better?
I can yell, that's for sure.
Yes.
I'm good at doing that.
I'll just give you the technical stuff and most.
Yes.
So if you don't mind, we just, uh, tell us who you are and what you can hear.
Good evening, with the chair and members of the board, my name is Peter Brown. I am here representing the property owner Maple Gate Realty Trust as well as the applicant developer for this particular site. My office address is Brown Legal, P L L C, two Oliver Street in Boston. And with me.
Director John Husek with Fuller Engineering.
Okay.
And my name is Daniel Server with NextGrid.
Okay. Fantastic.
And also I have Attorney Allison Fennell with me as well.
Alright, so what I've gathered and I've read every, all sixty pages of those. It's actually sixty-four, six-sixty-six. Will for use variance?
Yes. So we are before you, this is our first time before you, we spent a good amount of time in the planning board. We underwent a six-month review. We have a north parcel and a south parcel. Our north parcel is identified as parcel one, our south parcel is identified as parcel three. So our north is completed and fully permitted through the planning board. We started it over the summer, uh, over six months, it was approved unanimously in January. And that decision's on record and we're about clean, about to uh, finish up the permitting on the south project. During that six-month permitting process, uh, there were a lot of hearings, a lot of issues that came up. Some relevant to the permitting request, a lot that was related to the golf course in the future that really had nothing to do with the permitting. But, uh, it took up and consumed a lot of meetings. In October of twenty-three, we were able to kind of take a turn and address some of those. And I had read a statement that was put in the public record. I'd like to read that, uh, tonight, just so that that clearly uh, tells us where we are with the golf course going forward in the future, and then I could focus on what's before us this evening. So it's a short statement if you will.
Sure, same, that's what I was gonna ask you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and this was read previously, as I said, on October twelfth, twelve twenty-three, before the planning. I want to be very clear for the public that the permitting of this project is not about a choice between a solar project on the Franklin side of the property and the golf course continuing to operate. The property is being sold, period. That decision was made on September twenty-first, twenty nineteen. The fact that the property was up for sale and that the property owner was looking for the best price and best project was not a secret. Meetings were held with the administration in Franklin and here in Bellingham over several years. There was a residential deal with Toll Brothers. Bellingham did not want it. There were industrial opportunities. Those were of concern to both Bellingham and Franklin. The owner sought out solar. The owner sought out a solar company with an excellent reputation, in this case NextGrid. And the owner entered into a purchase and sale agreement with this solar company. Prior to this deal, numerous businesses, entities, and individuals have had the opportunity to try and purchase the property. Lastly, I want to be very clear about the ownership of the property. Something that was raised many times during the, the planning board hearing and it's never been in dispute. And it's expressly documented in our application submitted as well as with the planning board. The owner of the property is a trust called Maple Gate Realty Trust. Sally Winters is the trustee of that trust. That trust is what is referenced, referred to as a nominee trust. That means it takes its directions from another person or entity. That entity is Maple Gate Realty Associates. And that entity is controlled by Sally's mother, Shirley. The other interest holders in Maple Gate Realty Associates do not get a say. But they are Shirley's children. And that's Sally Winters, Julie Evans, and Michael French. I represent Shirley, I represent Sally, and I represent Julie, and I have done so for the last five and a half years. Michael French is represented by his own lawyer that is also based in Boston. All of them, including Michael, have reviewed the purchase and sale agreement with the solar company and consented to it. Michael's attorney reviewed it, made changes to it, and has been kept up to date on the permitting and the sale, including this one yesterday. Michael's attorney consented to the standard language in our sale agreement with the buyer that the seller, number one, would cooperate with the permitting and the sale. Number two, would not interfere with any permitting of the project. And three, would not provide support to any opposition to the permitting of the project. Back in October, what I had written is in the months that the permitting had been underway, neither Michael nor his attorney submitted anything to Franklin or Bellingham contesting the authority of the owner and the applicant to have submitted the application, nor did they contest any of the permitting requests. And so that was true all the way through the approval of the north, through everything on the south, through both communities. Many statements and innuendos that have been thrown around about the family, this referred to the planning board process, were flat out wrong. And I stated back in October, they were hurtful. And so in October, I implored the board to keep the public conversation that night and going forward, focused on the merits and substance of the application and the legitimate areas of review by the board.
So I'm gonna help everyone out here. We are only here for the various use variants, not for the validity of the solar plant. Whether it's the residents want it, we're here strictly for use variants in the access road.
Thank you, sir.
And we're gonna keep it that way.
Thank you very much.
That's all, that's all the board has, is the use variants. Okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that, I'm, I'm ready, I'm ready to go if you are.
Yeah, I, I, you have questions, and again, I, I've talked quite a bit of this before. You say you have, is parcel one part of the use variants as well, you said the redwood units? Or they're just for lot three?
No, we, we applied on the parcel one. That's what's before you now. But we believe if you grant the request that we're asking for, it takes care of everything. But and if not, you'll, well, you'll have us back for, you'll have us back for parcel three. What I have before you is an application for parcel one, and it's an application to really do one of two things. Right? Number one, for you to officially declare, which we think is the correct position. Now, we don't need a use variance at all. And I'll go through that argument why. If that's allowed, I don't need to come back for the, for the south parcel. If you were to go and say, we disagree, we think we do need to give you a use variance, and we grant it, for whatever, for whatever reason, then I would come back to you on the south.
Um, we do have town council online too, correction. Are you available? I, I can't, literally can't see.
Robin?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Robin. Uh, I did take the time to read the.
Hello, everyone.
Hi there. The letter you would put together for us the other day or yesterday. Um, do you mind speaking into your opinion on whether a new experience is required on this property?
Sure, um, that, obviously the letter I sent you was confidential document because it hasn't been used at a public meeting yet, so something for the board to keep in mind. But, um, you know, this shouldn't be surprising to the applicant or really to anyone who, who followed the planning board proceedings that it's our opinion as town council that the project does need zoning relief. Uh, because it's located in the suburban zoning district where the particular use is not allowed. And that it's our understanding that approximately seventeen percent of the town is located in the industrial district where the use is allowed. So we don't believe the town's required to treat the bylaws prohibited, which would mean that zoning relief is required. Um, that said, we also recognize that the use benefits from certain protections in the ninth paragraph of chapter forty A, section three, and that certainly, you know, should weigh into the board's decision-making when it considers the application. Uh, but the fact that solar has some additional protections for the board to factor into its decision-making, in my opinion, doesn't mean that it does not need zoning relief, and we think that a use variance is an appropriate way under your bylaw to obtain that relief.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, I could do a, a brief presentation that hits that legal issue, but also gives other ways to go and, and, and resolve it without there being a big conflict between on the legal, on the legal.
I mean, I'm not sure how the board members feel, but I mean, I would just like to just dive into the use variants and let's just
Sure.
get it done and.
Yep.
I mean, we can look after request one or request two that you have and we're gonna tie things up even longer.
Well, I think request two relates to what Attorney Stoudt was saying, is the impact of the, of the Dover amendment. So we gotta just throw, throw it out there, but I, I think you'll be able to resolve it without having to get into a academic legal debate over. I'd like to avoid that, too. We, we're, we're looking to, to, to move it on to get it done. So let me.
A point of, just a point of order, just to clarify, if you feel like you need to tell us something, we certainly don't want to circumvent.
I don't want to shut you off, but I just, I, I've read through it, I, I take the town council opinion.
Okay.
And, um, first, I, I think we are just diving to the, the use variants and and move on.
Yep, and so what we did, and we deliberately put in three different ways for us to achieve the, the, the desired outcome that we want. Because we're not interested in an academic legal battle and writing a legal treatise over how all of these things get done. But I do think it's important, and I, I need to lay some of this stuff, stuff out. So the first thing is, we're talking about a pre-existing driveway that runs through Bellingham, that serves the golf course currently in Franklin. It is the same use, it is the same property, that'll be used in the exact same way except less, because now you're gonna have much people going. There is no solar in Bellingham, not. The entire solar array is in, is in Franklin. So the question becomes, because Bellingham zoning is suburban and Franklin zoning is industrial, is zoning relief required to continue to utilize that accessway to go and access the, what'll be the solar field in Franklin? Our position under the Dover amendment, ninth paragraph, is that it's not council is stating, it's really more of your issue, the Dover amendment does apply, it does have protections, and that's for you to go and to consider. My starting point is this, is that let's look to the property that's our direct of butter, which is a so, which is a solar field, which has an accessway in Bellingham, and actually has a solar array in Bellingham. We know that we have to treat properties, whether it's in Bellingham or other, other communities, that are under the same zoning and the same rules, have to be treated the same. So I want to go over what happened with respect to L M P. And it's, we're not asking for any favorable treatment, we, we believe what happened with L M P was the proper and correct application of the law. So what happened with L M P is that they went through the planning board and got their approval. They did not come before you for a use variance, even though their accessway runs through Bellingham. And their zoning was suburban. And it didn't have to come before you, even though their actual solar array is in Bellingham, under suburban zone. They were in litigation with the town of Bellingham. There was a court filing that was made in the land court. And we attached it as an exhibit to our filing. And it confirmed a couple of things, and we cite to it in our memorandum. It confirmed that even though the zoning was suburban, where solar is not allowed in Bung, in Bellingham, the town at L M P described it as a, as a right project. And it described it as no zoning relief was required because of the zoning protections of forty A, section three.
And so. Actually, I do believe, and by now we know all that could go, or I get finally, no better. Did they not reuse that zoning before the zone changed?
Yeah, a little more nuanced than.
Yeah.
You can pull it up.
We don't want to get into that, but it's a little more nuanced.
But what I, what I, what I can put up before you. I, I understand there was litigation history. But what the agreement specified, regardless of the history, is that it was a suburban district. They were applying suburban. And it was as of right, forty-eight, because of forty, section three, because it was solar. That's what was filed with the court, that's what's in the decision. And that, that's essentially our argument, you know, our argument before you. Besides that, okay, we have a decision that came out from the Supreme Judicial Court that talked about the solar protections that exist when you have a neighboring community where the zoning doesn't match the solar use, but the solar array is in the other community. And this is the tracer lane two decision that we decided in our memorandum. In that case, involved the town of Lexington and the town of Waltham, the city of Waltham. For our purposes, Waltham is Bellingham and Lexington is Franklin. And their same thing, accessway from Waltham in a zone that did not allow for solar going into Lexington where the project was gonna be that did allow solar. And that our state Supreme Court said, you know, that because of the Dover amendment, forty-eight, three, paragraph nine, not educational, not, not religious, but solar. Because the only way to go and prohibit solar, you would need a a threat, an impediment, an obstruction to public welfare and to public safe, to public safety that can't apply with respect to the mere use of an accessway. And in the tracer two case, while the facts are nearly identical, they're even more supportive of our argument here, because then they were building a new accessway. Whereas here, we're using the exact same accessway that already exists. So we have three arguments put before you. Number one is, we don't, we should be treated as an, as a right project, just like L M P was pursuant to that decision and that, and, and that, and that order. Secondly, we say if you disagree with that, and you think we still have to come before the board, and you need to hear this and double check this and make sure there's no impediment with respect to uh, public danger, um, then we would ask that the use variants be granted because of and pursuant to the protections of forty A, section three, which is our statement that we want solar, we need solar. And we are deliberately restricting local review and, and control. Not hands-off, it's not education, it's not religious, but we're only going to allow that control to the degree that it is needed, as Tracer Two said, to protect against, um, true harm to the public welfare of the, of the, of the community. And here you have a great benefit. This went through a six-month review of the planning board. Not a special permit, not site plan review, but development review. And it was exhaustive, and they looked at everything. And they brought us back many, many times and asked for many, many things, and we complied and we worked through cooperatively everything together. And you have a unanimous vote from the planning board approving this project. So clearly, there can't be any threats to the public welfare that exists for using this accessway the same way it's always used before, because our planning board in Bellingham has already gone and unanimously approved the project. Right? Our third request, our third way of going and getting there, which we really don't think is the proper legal analysis to go and do, would be, let's look at this under a typical use variants and go look to the elements of your bylaws and see whether you determine whether there's conditions on the ground and other things as to why you should go and grant this use variants. We think you can grant it pursuant to that provision, but we think it wouldn't be the appropriate legal analysis. Here, you have an existing accessway. We're causing zero harm to the community, we're causing zero effect to the community, nothing's changed. There's a current driveway, it's going to a commercial use. There will be a existing driveway, not changing, going to a commercial use. The only difference is, it's gonna be even used even less than it was used before. And we cited a case, Metennis versus the city of Brockton, that would give you the authority to grant the use of variants pursuant to that case and that argument that are, that are making. But to the extent they're gonna have opposition later, to the extent somebody might try and do something in the court or whatever it is, I think it's important that we stay in the right lane, we do it under the correct legal analysis, and we think forty A, section three. Regardless of what you say, no variance is needed at all, or you say we're gonna grant the use variance uh, pursuant to, and because of forty A, section three, we think is a much better and easy way of analysis. The last thing I, I want to provide to you is, we gave you a case decided by Chief Judge, Judge of the Land Court, Judge Piper. And it was decided just a year and a half ago, and it involved the town of Northbridge. Town of Northbridge was represented by the same firm that represented the town of Bellingham. And in that case, was a solar case, the exact argument that being made, that's asking us to get a, a use variance is what was made in that case. They said, you need to go to the board and go and get a use variance. And the chief judge of the land court said, no, you don't need to. Because you're protected under the Dover amendment, there's no argument that could be made that you're in any way by having the, the accessway and the use affecting the public welfare. Therefore, kind of be a waste of the applicant's time and the board's time to simply go through and check the box. And that's the town of Northbridge versus McQuade, we cited it in here and gave that to you. So whether it's the legal academic argument of number one, that we don't need to be before you at all, it's the, it's the argument number two, pursuant to Northbridge, forty A, section three, how you treating the neighbor, everything else, the Dover amendment applies, there's no harm to the public welfare, the use variance is granted. Or number three, this is our only accessway to the property, it's neighboring community, and we're doing it through a penis. Either way gets us to where we need, we need to be, I think, the easiest route for you. And that's the most consistent and fits within town council's view and our view is argument number two. And we have asked that it be allowed, um, I don't know, they, do they have anything you'd like to add?
I think you said a lot, yep.
Yeah, I'm on stopwatch, don't worry.
Um, Judge, you want to just briefly just show the site real quickly, if anybody has any?
Actually, can I get click, I, cause we'll go back to town council before I go, I understood. We are strictly doing parcel one, correct?
I have before you on parcel one. Yeah, and in fact, you know, so that is what's in our application. And in the, the first paragraph of our background of our memorandum, we discussed the fifty, it's one fifteen thousand foot array, and I give you the property size of the north parcel. Right? I'd like to have to not come back and do, you know, do the check the box a second time, but what is before you is simply the north. Which is previously.
Lots, guys, questions?
No, I think I'd like to hear the town council.
Mr. Chair, it's a little hard to hear me, did you say you had a question for me?
Yeah, we, we, I think we're all kind of sitting here wondering, or at least I'm thinking, um, how the, the request of using the applicant's request of number one or number two, if we should just be looking at doing a straight-out use variance for this property.
Well, I, I certainly think that as, and I, I'll just go on the record of saying, I don't agree with most of the description of what you just heard of the relevant case law. But I do agree that the ninth paragraph of general law, chapter forty-eight, section three, which is not a traditional Dover amendment protection. Um, and the S J C made it clear that this is not the same type of Dover amendment protections that apply to religious or childcare or agriculture or education, the traditional Dover amendment uses, this is a different protection. Um, do apply to this property, there's no question that the accessway benefits from the same type of solar protections that the solar project itself benefits from. And that the statute provides that you can't generally prohibit that use without a significant public health, safety, and welfare concern. Um, and given that tracer lane involved facts that were similar in that they involved an access issue. Although in that case, the court was moved by the fact that Waltham only allowed solar on one to two percent of the community, as opposed to the seventeen percent that Bellingham allows solar on. Uh, I do think ultimately, whether you analyze this kind of under what the applicant has framed as option two, granting a use variance, um, straight under forty A, section three, paragraph nine, or whether you do, um, you know, something akin to a normal use variance analysis, understanding that um, a, a denial of this application could create a hardship in the prevention of a protected use. Um, I think either of those approaches may be fine. I think ultimately the analysis is that without a significant public health or health, safety, or welfare reason to deny this application, it would likely be difficult to defend that denial in court. Um, I, you know, I, I don't necessarily agree with it, with how Attorney Brown got you there, but the ultimate result is the statutory protections are very clear. Um, and there are special protections for solar, they're just not the same as the protections that you're used to seeing for other types of uses that we do call Dover amendment uses. And the Supreme Judicial Court in tracer lane was very clear that the distinction between those uses remains. Um, nonetheless, the statute does say that you cannot prohibit or unreasonably regulate without a public health, safety, or welfare concern. I do think that should kind of be the focus of the court's analysis. Um, were you to deny this application without that, the facts supporting that concern, um, I think it would be difficult to defend it in court, particularly with the similarities between this case and tracer lane that did involve an access issue.
Thank you. Chair.
Welcome.
I would just say, I, I agree with that, I agree with that conclusion, so the focus of the inquiry is whether there is a significant public health or safety concern. And our view based on the planning board six-month process to sign off by the fire chief, sign off by all the other departments, the protections built within the approval itself, there are none.
I have a question. Are there any use variants, because majority of this is in Franklin? Is it specifically for the road? I guess I just, I think what we need to be mindful of, like you said, Peter, is that we just stay within what's our purview.
Right.
And I, frankly, and just, I think I'd be more an advocate for following our own guidelines for just looking at it as traditional use variants. But, um, so that's, I guess what I'm just curious about is exactly what.
Um, I actually, Jim's on the line, is he?
So.
Right, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I think I, I can, I can help you with the legal side on that, if that's your, if that's your question.
Well, I guess I'm just curious about, because I think we need to, similar to what the applicant is saying, is that we don't want to drag into all the issues that is not before us today. So I'm just thinking specifically, if we're looking at the, the road.
So, so the, the question of town council is, and I, and I, I thought I asked Jim this the other day. Um, the use variants, is it strictly for the road or is it for the use?
Yes.
So strictly.
So it's, so when you, the, the way the zoning law works is that if the access to a particular use, so in this case, the access to the solar project goes through private property, it's not a public street, then the access itself is supposed to have the same zoning authorization as the use. So here, all you're being asked to do is to grant essentially a use variance permission for the applicant to use the road to access the solar property. But you're not evaluating the solar project. You're simply evaluating the piece of land in Bellingham that's gonna be used to access that property. Um, and, and I, you know, maybe it's less technical than the way the applicant's presented it, I don't know that there's a big difference between their two and three. Um, you know, I guess essentially I would lean towards two, the bottom line, like I said, is without a significant public health, safety, or welfare concern, I think a denial in this case is gonna be very difficult to defend.
So we, we.
But all you're looking at.
Guys, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you.
No, I was gonna say, all you're looking at is the road access. Um, itself, not the solar project, but it happens that the access is to solar, and that's how zoning law works.
Yes, second question.
If they were accessing directly from a public street, they wouldn't be here.
So I think for me personally, that if we were to draft something together, I would want, um, could we condition that the road would only be to access a solar array?
Right now, I believe.
Cause that would be my concern, I guess, because you'd be opening it up.
The use variants will only be to access lot one. That's all it's here for. For solar. The, yeah, so we could condition it that it is for lot one for a solar array. For a solar, the it, yeah, so we could condition it that it is for lot one for a solar array.
Okay.
What it's pulling in, that was my question.
Believe the planning board, oh, sorry, I believe the planning board decision had a similar condition.
Okay.
Cause I think as far as the other criteria, I mean, I would be. That I I guess trying not to get sidetracked, that I think what's before us, that obviously I don't think it would have any impacts to traffic. Any other negatives, I mean, my, yeah, biggest concern.
Yeah, we read a definition of a variance.
Go ahead, go ahead, ask a suggestion, yeah.
Why don't we, before we get into deliberations, why don't we see if the applicant is done presenting? And then ask the members of the community to weigh in before we start to deliberate, so we get all the information.
Are you, you good for right now or what?
Yes, right now, yeah.
All right, um we will open up the public input, I would like you, please keep in mind, we're only here for the use of the road. The validity of the project, we're not here to discuss, it's already been through the planning board, it's strictly a variance for the roadway.
Mister Chairman, when we talk the roadway, we're talking the existing driveway.
Correct, correct.
Well, that's not totally true, is it?
Actually, if you can.
The town of Bellingham, yes.
You name the address.
Ray Lemoine, one eleven Hingrove Avenue, Bellingham. Okay, I ran your cameras here the three years, will that remember me? From what I've heard, just in this presentation, if it's harm to town of Bellingham or its residents. You can deny the permit. They're gonna take down how many thousand trees? That are gonna impact our waterways, Iron Mine Road or Brook, Iron, whatever whatever it's called. Is right behind that property, it feels such it it. It feeds the Charles River Basin, it also feeds all the little tributaries, like the Peters River that runs right behind my house. My neighbor has flooded four times. We've been very, very wet this year, all the way back to last April, it's not gonna change. If there hasn't been a study on how that's gonna affect the watershed, we need to slow down and take a look at it. Because that will affect a lot of properties in the town of Bellingham, you were talking about the harm and impact. To deny, if you wanna deny, you can do it that way, or at least delay and make an impact study. I think that's what everybody here wants to see.
Anyone else?
Sir, can I go first? Thank you. Good evening. This is gonna take a little bit to read if I could, but I think it's gonna be very relevant.
Do I have to ask your name?
Uh no, well, it puts in my statement. Uh thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak, my name is Michael Connor, I live at thirteen Bellstone Drive in Bellingham. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I'm the current chairman of the Bellingham Select Board. That said, I am not here to speak on behalf of the board, I'm here solely on as a resident of Bellingham. And yes, a golfer who places a high value on having a golf course in the region as a means to my personal. And my social welfare, I completely agree that this has nothing to do with the golf course. It has everything to do with Bellingham. Over the years, I have played four golf courses in Bellingham, Pine Acres, an executive style golf course, which closed in favor of housing. Bunge Brook, the link style course, which closed in favor of housing. By the way, the planning board voted unanimously to send this to you, they did not vote unanimously to approve the project. We have New England Country Club, one of the oldest courses in the region dating back to nineteen oh three, which voters at town meeting. Voted in favor of modifying the zoning with the stipulation that the golf course remain open space in perpetuity. And allowing for the construction of an over fifty five community should one move forward. Then there's Maple Gate, which has been a destination for golfers for thirty five years, whose actress is in Bellingham. Dating back to when Lenny French Senior built his dream and opened the course in nineteen eighty nine. On land which the voters of Bellingham, like at New England Golf Court, Lincoln Country Club. Amended the zoning for the property in question at town meetings, and that you are being asked to provide a use variance for. I believe that it is your role to protect the citizens and assets of Bellingham. And this property, whether it's called Maple Gate or something else, is such an asset. Having done some research on the matter, there are five areas that should be part of the discussion, that would indulge me to speak to each. The first is not been spoken of, it's mass general law chapter sixty one B, which is the tax classification of the property. The property was placed in sixty one B, which is recreational use. If you aren't familiar with it, sixty one A is forestland, sixty one A is farmland, sixty one B. To my, to my knowledge, this property has not been offered back to the town of Bellingham to buy, we have the right of first refusal. Now, whether that right of first refusal should occur after this has been approved. And the town opts to buy all the land, or whether it should have done been occurred before it went to you is another question. That's not for me to decide. The second is the zoning act, general law, chapter forty sections, subsection three, paragraph nine, they have noted that. The third is the Dover Amendment and references the tracer lane realty trust lawsuit. The fourth item is, what is the benefit to Bellingham? And fifth, any concerns that you might have as a board? That something else will be built in this project, I sat in the meetings with the family. And the warehouse was stopped, Toll Brothers was stopped. And this project was chosen because it was deemed the least restrictive because of the Dover Amendment. Mass General Law sixty one B is the current tax classification. I already went into that, is my understanding, at some point, the town will have our right of first refusal to buy the property. This has not occurred, and it is questionable as to whether this should have occurred. The zoning act chapters, sorry, general law, chapter forty eight, subsection three, nine, quote. No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably be regulate the installation of solar energy systems. Or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy. Except where necessary to protect the public health, safety or welfare. This is the important part, because when it comes to safety, it is Bellingham's public services. That are the first responders to any incident on the property, the vandalism, trespassing, fire, hydrant work, or something else. And in any case, this takes the public services from Bellingham while dealing with issues in Franklin. Bellingham does not have adult tennis courts, we don't have pickleball courts, we have golf courts, golf courses. And that is our public health and welfare. The individuals in this room rely on Maple Gate for their health and their social welfare. I see many of them on a regular basis, the health and welfare of our community is tied to this property. Recreation is a public health. The third item, digging deeper, the Supreme Judicial Court determined in the tracer lane lawsuit. As you just noted, that one to two percent provision versus Bellingham seventeen percent. I firmly believe that the courts in Massachusetts should have the right to rule if there's a difference between one to two percent. And seventeen percent. I have additional details, but in the spirit of time, I'd like to jump ahead. While municipalities do have some flexibility to reasonably limit where certain forms of solar energy may be cited. The validity of any restriction ultimately entails balancing the interest that the bylaw advances. Against the impact of protected solar use. Based on the framework, the court determined that Waltham has unreasonably restricted solar energy. By excluding large scale solar arrays. I'm an athletic director, I go to Ashland High School, every school in the district has solar arrays above their parking lots. Hopkinton is doing the same thing, no one's approached Bellingham to build them on our parking lots. We have at an upcoming special town meeting, a provision to stop warehouses. If there is such a provision to stop warehouses, we have an abundance of land in the town of Bellingham. To cite solar arrays. This is not about giving Franklin a million dollars in tax revenue, this is about Bellingham. It's not about a golf course, it's about Bellingham. It's frustrating as all hell, that's what I know it to be, why is Bellingham different? As I've already stated, we are in a better scenario than Waltham and tracer lane with the one to two percent. Oh God, one third of Bellingham is owned commercial, industrial, do we really need to cut down thousands of trees? Give millions in tax revenue to Franklin and not a dime to Bellingham? Bellingham zoning throughout the town is not restrictive of solar. If you need a reason to dine, use variance, simply start here. Finally, let's talk about any concerns about, well, solar is a lot better than a warehouse or or other housing. We've been there, done that, prior to this project, there was a discussion with the town to allow a warehouse. And then a large scale housing developed by Toll Brothers, neither occurred, why? Mostly because all access to the Franklin property is through Bellingham. With zoning attachments, and let's not forget that the only way to get water to the property is through Bellingham. And nine one one services come from Bellingham, the development of the Franklin property does not benefit Bellingham. It won't surprise you anyone, once you deny the use variance, this will be appealed and defending will be an uphill battle. Let KP Law do that. Deny the variance, let the court decide, thank you for listening.
And if I ask you a question?
By all means.
And I really like something you would you would say about the tax rates. You talk about right of first refusal to be able to buy the property, that would only be the property that's in our town, correct?
That would only be the property in our town, and I do not believe that if we owned this property, we would let anyone cross it. No one crosses the playground to get to another person's piece of property. We have solar arrays in this town and no one crosses them to get to properties. Do I believe that the town of Bellingham would buy the property? I believe it's unlikely, but we do have that right relative to the timing. And I think the more suitable argument is that seventeen percent of the town could be solar. And if the if the applicants wish or the sellers wish to sell. Sell it to someone who wants to keep it as a golf course, been that way for thirty five years.
Patrick from Union, I live at forty Mureon Avenue, Bellingham. I have a couple of questions, first, um I know the road going in is Bellingham. Now, we're not gonna make anything out of this, right, we're not making any money off of this, electric bills are still to be high. The town is not gonna make any money off this, the only one making money gonna be off of these guys here, the Frenchies and Franklin. Who's gonna put a water tower in, or whatever we have to do for the fire department, who's paying for that? Is that Bellingham? Who's gonna, who's gonna uh protect the land that's on Bellingham? So you're gonna have to hire more firemen, you're gonna have to hire more police officers, who's that money coming out of? Our pockets. You leave it as a golf course, let's find somebody to buy the damn thing. It's ridiculous, have a soul, we got solar everywhere, you got solar next to the golf course. Everybody's got solar on their roofs, like he said, why can't we put up our up rises where we could put them over parking lots? Like a lot of the schools have them, they have them like covers shed for cars going, solar on top of that. Let these guys do that, they don't need to ruin a beautiful golf course where I go to play because of health reasons. Of my heart and stuff like that, and my doctor told me, I gotta get out and play golf and relax and do all this. And it's getting taken away from me now, that's why I moved to Bellingham. Because in ninety nine, we were looking to buy a house, and I bought a house on Three Grove Street. My wife goes, you're all set, you got four golf courses, and she had Dairy Queen. But I said, okay, that works great, then we lose the golf bus and rent the road. And I hope, all three. Then we lose now the um Bunge Brook. Hopefully, we don't lose Maple Gate. New England just jumped up their prices because of what's happening with the uh Maple Gate, all over a grand. For a weekday pass that we pay a lot cheaper at Maple Gate than what they do at New England. Cause they know there's no more golf course is gonna be in Bellingham, they're the only golf course, so now they can raise their prices to wherever the hell they want. So I'm sitting there going, I came to Bellingham, cause I like the town. And um schools were great, it was a beautiful place, my wife loved it, cause you could see deer and all that stuff. Now, ask your own question. It's only I'm gonna stay as a town, or we're gonna go to a city, okay? Cause look what happened to Framingham, I lived in Framingham from nineteen seventy to ninety eight. And what did they do, they went to a city, and look what the hell happened to downtown Framingham, you got condominiums all over the place. It it does not look like Framingham anymore. And I'm worried about all the trees getting taken down, like on Maple Street now, it looks like there's a yellow ticket over on Lake Street. You wanna put fifty two condominiums in there, and that's all marshland. What, well, how do you land on that, I'm a carpenter, you can't put houses on that stuff, there's no way. What I'm saying, it just, it can be ridiculous that we're losing something that we we love. And it's helping the taxes in Bellingham, so once you lose, we lose this place, now who's paying the taxes, extra taxes? Ops in Bellingham.
Well, I I, and I could be incorrect, I don't wanna get in a debate over, but the, I believe Maple Gate's actually totally frightening, it's not.
Well, you gotta pay Framingham, Bellingham hard.
Seventeenth and eighteenth hole and parts of what would be the. Third hole tee box under in Bellingham.
I mean, I didn't have a find, I mean, when I played the course, I just played.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, it's just, it, and the thing is, Maple Gate is the home of what, Medway? And Bellingham hot golf, um golf league. Then they have all the schools that go, there's classes from day after the school ends to the day the school starts again. They have classes a whole summer of all kids, and it's gotta be at least a couple hundred more kids that play in this thing. All year round, now what happens to them? Now they're gonna go to some other place, another town, to go find a golf course to go play. You know, Bellingham plays there, they have a league, they're tournaments and stuff like that, now they're gonna have to go find somewhere else. It is sad that Bellingham is really, it's, it wasn't, it's not like it used to be, it's it's gotten so commercialized. That it's gotten to be ridiculous, all these buildings, cause I lived on Three Grove Street, I got lined up with the. The town, they told me, when they put in Dunkin' Donuts on Depot Street. There was not gonna be one eighteen wheeler that would come down half an hour and take a left onto Depot Street. Soon as they've signed the paper, they change it to commercial, doesn't all the trucks now instead, where they widen the road on one forty? Was supposed to go that way, to go to one forty onto four ninety five, over down one twenty six to there. We got screwed, one night we counted thirty eight.
I told, I I just gotta stop here.
But I'm saying, this is what.
We're going off track, what we could do here.
But I think it's time that we should stand up and say, no way we should have this solar company here. I'm sorry, I don't mind solar, but not in our golf course. Thank you.
Uh quick question, do you need to be a town resident to speak?
Just do your name and address, sir.
Great, may I speak? My name is Andy Dengus, and actually I'm a, the aforementioned Franklin resident. But do play at the golf course, see a lot of these guys at the golf course. Um and and just a couple of things, I listened to the attorney speak, I'm not an attorney. Uh I, I was interested when he mentioned the chief judge said there was no need to go before the board, and my question is, why are you here now? Uh before the board, so, you know, citing uh precedent is one thing, uh but as a. Um member of the general area, uh you know, I heard Mike talk about um being part of the. Uh recreation, and the recreation is much broader than just Bellingham, as I think a lot of people pointed out. Um the one thing I would ask here. Um, the one thing I would ask here is, uh, and somebody brought it up before. Just maybe we need to tap the brakes here. I'm not saying that we make a decision here. But one of the things I think you should think about, and again, I understand what you guys have to decide tonight. And I apologize, this is my first public meeting with this. So if this has already been discussed and decided, I apologize, but uh, one tree effectively uh purifies a million cubic meters of air. And one drinks fifty gallons a day. Fifty gallons a day. Gallons a day. Um, it also is a uh trees are also used to extract pollutants from the air. So my question is, and again, I I'm not I'm just asking you to think about tapping the brakes before you venture over a line that you'll never be able to get back from. And if you do that, uh, and everybody takes into consideration not only the recreational use, the physical use, but the biological and the the environmental use. I I I just think you're going too quickly. I think you need to tap the brake. And that's my only point. And I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online?
My name is Scott Parker. People call me Breezy. I've been here twenty five years and I'm from the south. I started in Bellingham. And I moved in at these condos behind the um rapid refill when I started moving here, when I moved here first. And it was a driving range. And now you cannot go through that road without sitting through three stoplight sessions trying to get through in the morning. The progress of this town is great. I've lived on Twin Brook, I've lived on Chestnut Street, and I lived on Maple Street. I lived in Ralphie Moore's land on thirty one Maple Street. So I've watched this development of this town come along in twenty five years. It's gotten to a point where it's becoming Quincy. You do not have, you cannot sit through a light, you gotta go through three light cycles to get through in the afternoons. I believe, and this is my first town meeting of any kind, because I believe what this golf course gives to the community of being the children who play golf, learning, respect and integrity is important to our childhood instead of playing video games. And uh being rude, today's, you know, today's morals are gone, but golf gives it back to them. No cheating, no, no, no nothing. It's a great, a great learning tool for the younger generation. And I believe that this course is like for the elder, myself, I'm I consider myself a young guy, but hey. But I do see the the community building up to a point to where it's becoming no fun to even drive to the corner store because it's like Quincy and Framingham. You can't get through the lights anymore, excuse me. You can't get through the lights. How many light cycles do you sit through? And then it's like, because it's grown so much, all that land back there on uh Lake Street is gonna become uh that marshland is now, I'm watching people scalp it and they're gonna bring it from one twenty six all the way through. You're just gonna be one big town now. You can't even support your delight cycles. You're not widening the streets. You're not doing nothing but making more houses and more and more and more and more, but there's no infrastructure. And I'm asking that consideration of what this golf course does for mental health, children, and not to mention the 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 animals, the the gray herons that you see there, the red tail hawks, the turtles, the snakes. You know, then the eight hole is great for two snakes that I know of. I've been playing there for a while. And at the waterfall, you can see the snakes. I've seen gray heron there. I see the turtles. I've seen the frogs. The red, the red tailed uh hawks are there. There's a lot there going on. It's not just a piece of land, there is environmental danger. When Ralphie Moore has that land on Maple Street and I watch forty five acres of the marshland. And when it explodes in the fall, it's like, wow, I lived at that. I saw forty five acres of of the uh river explode and all the turtles. It's there. And if you take it away, it's gone. It ain't coming back. It's over, done, game over. And that's just what I gotta say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Um, I agree with everything that these gentlemen have said. I really agree with you with all of that. I have a, I, my name is Sandy Wolf. Also in Franklin, on the board, right on the border. Um, I have taken up golf only in the past five years. My son golfed with Greg Dowdell from the age of four. He's now twenty eight. For right through varsity. He was a Medway uh high school student. That's where their home court is. This course is just a beautiful place. I mean, landscape wise, I just like you, I see a million animals every time. Where are these animals going? Has anyone thought about thousands of trees coming out? All of these animals being, you know, they're they're not gonna have a home. I say the same thing. I see all the birds, I see the snakes, I see tons of deer, coyote, we see all these beautiful things. All these beautiful animals, they're not gonna have a home anymore. I I I just think about also speaking regarding the kids. I see Greg, I see, every day I'm at Maple Gate in the summertime. There's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids and clinics and all these kids that have a place to go and and recreation. This is, this is personally good for my physical and mental health.
Unfortunately, as the applicant has told us, they're selling the property. They they've signed a PNSO and at least in, and I'll take it from personal, I'm not being the chair of the board. Unless someone steps up and wants to buy it and turn it into a golf course, these people are selling this property. Trust me, I I don't wanna see the green space go. It it kills me personally. But if they're selling property, we we're held by a limitation of what we can do on the variance, whether it fits our criteria or doesn't fit our criteria.
Do they have to have a plan now that as the new owners as to what they plan on doing with all this wildlife and all these trees?
The wildlife disappeared when you took down the road from across the street for rapid refill. The day they started those trees, I saw the wildlife running across the street to the the farm, the agri-lic farms. The wildlife had nowhere to go when they were stripping that land. They were just fleeing. Coyotes, I saw coyotes, I saw rabbits, I saw it all, just turkeys. The turkeys are gone. I mean, the red turkeys on Maple Street now, they're gone.
I have a quick, small point. My name is Mike Capone. I live at Seventy Box Pond, if I have in Bellingham. The town of Bellingham has an opportunity to make some serious moves here. The town of Hingham had the same situation where they were selling the course. They sold it to the town. The town now purchased the golf course in Hingham. They're turning a profit year after year now. The town of Bellingham could be making money off this if they did a case study on what happened in Hingham. We could do the same thing there. Instead of losing income, instead of losing property value, instead of losing a beautiful course to a solar farm, which I'm not opposed to solar whatsoever, but we could keep it a golf course and the town of Bellingham could make a make a solid profit year after year and the community would continue to be able to play on it. Has anyone heard about this golf course situation?
Unfortunately, as I asked Mr. Connor, only a very small portion of it's in our town. The it's the whole, Mr. Connor, the only, it's only small portions in our town, correct, of the golf course?
Okay.
And we have not been approached if we wanted to buy the property.
Nor is Franklin is, that I'm aware of.
I mean, the property has been for sale for six years now and it's been on the MLS open market and it hasn't been a secret to either town that this is for sale. Um, again, as Peter said, we didn't go to the golf course and say, we wanna make you an offer you can't refuse. Uh, they came to us um because of our reputation and said, we think that this would be the best person to sell the course to. Uh, I'm a golfer. I had a childhood golf course. I'm not in the business of being a bad guy or or wanting to steal people's golf courses. But the fact is, is we didn't wanna get into, but the facts are, they're gonna just file a court injunction and get the golf course closed and sell it with less opposition if it doesn't go through one way or another. And so, you know, we wanna work with you and we did work with the planning board for over a year um on all these issues we're talking about, trees, um wildlife, how to preserve uh native flora and fauna, planting pollinators, having wildlife gaps, so all these species that are being discussed can continue to thrive. Um, and we do wanna be good neighbors, but to say that this is a choice between solar and golf, it's just it's it's not the case, we don't believe.
Has there been an impact study on the watershed around Maple Gate?
Sir, it's gonna, it's, you got a question, it's gotta go.
I'm asking him, I'm not.
You know, it's gotta come through me, sir.
Okay. Can I ask the question though?
Yes, sir.
Has there been an impact study on the watershed around Maple Gate and how it's gonna affect the town of Bellingham?
Sure, you should add that back to me if you don't mind. Keep it a little late.
I I'm I'm happy to address people directly, but through the through the chair. Um, that was the process we went through with the planning board. Um, they addressed all stormwater concerns through D P standards. Um, John here uh did all of that calculation himself and can talk intelligently about it far more than I can, but again.
I I I think one of the things that's important, I tried to do tonight, and I know the chair, you're you're, you've made a few comments as well to try and keep us in our in our lane and within our within our scope. And we have a planning board that deals with a lot of the issues that have been talked about tonight. And we've done that process and we've done it exhaustively. We did it with peer review through Franklin. That peer review was absolutely reviewed by Bellingham. Then we went through all of the public comments and the concerns through each one and over six months. We went identifying each and every issue, gave a satisfactory answer. If we disagree, we worked towards a compromise and a resolution leading to the ultimate approval of the project with respect to everything that falls within the jurisdiction of the planning board. Here related to zoning and what's legally permissible under your bylaws with respect to the driveway. Not solar, not the solar array, which is in Franklin, the driveway to the solar array. And so I think that's important. I think the other point that Mr. Server raised, Mr. The buyer of the property is company is. But I could be here speaking as behalf of the property owner. It's important that everybody understands the golf course is closing no matter what, regardless of this buyer, this project, this particular approval. That is, time has reached its end and that that is a reality. And regardless of any, you know, anything else, uh regardless of whether we have to litigate these lower issues or, you know, otherwise the golf course is is closing. It's gonna be open, it's open now, it's open uh for the the season. We still have permitting to go. As Mr. Connor referenced, we're gonna go through a sixty one B process in Bellingham, a sixty one B process in Franklin. There's been no surprise about that. That's been talked about openly at probably over a dozen public hearings of both Franklin and Bellingham. Mr. Connor has attended at Bellingham, at least at one or two of them, attended one in Franklin and knows that is coming. After we get all of our permits and approvals, there was some talk, again, these are plenty more things, not zoning things, about the benefit to Bellingham where you're getting a passive use on the property. You're not getting a warehouse that we know the county doesn't want and all the trucks and everything else. You're getting a reduction of the impact of the property and you're getting a passive use. So in terms of the impact on the community, you can't have any better, plus solar, which is what the state legislature has told us is an important public policy and important public use. Further, the planning board, on behalf of the buyer chief, the chief of Bellingham, raised uh their concerns and their requests, and they asked for some help with their public service departments and how better to the community. And they asked for a contribution to help with their equipment that would service the property and service others in the community. And we were asked that as good neighbors, the buyer stepped up and said upon permitting and and approvals, we're donating fifty thousand dollars to the Bellingham buyer department. And I know they have plans to purchase a particular form of equipment to deal with emergency responses in that area and going beyond just that particular property. Mr. Connor also referenced the uh tracer lane and percentages of where solar is and everything else. Where that gets lost here, we're not talking about the actual solar array. We're not talking about an approval to do have a solar array in Bellingham. The solar array is in Franklin. We're talking about the access. So whether you have one percent or you have ninety nine percent, it doesn't matter. We're not talking about the actual equipment and the array, we're talking about the access. We're talking about a driveway that already exists. That's already used for a commercial purpose, that's gonna be used for another commercial purpose, that's not changing in any way at all. And, you know, the the last thing I'll just add is we included in our memorandum a a legal opinion from the attorney general uh and a current opinion from Attorney General Campbell. And she was evaluating a proposed zoning bylaw change, I believe it was the city of Marlboro. And what they were doing is they were gonna require somebody who's gonna do solar to go through a special permit process. And the question of whether requiring that process would kind of impact too much on the Dover Amendment, forty eight, three, paragraph nine, Attorney General said, no, it it's okay to go through the process. It's okay to go through that, but you gotta be really, really, really careful. Because the only way you can go and interfere in any way with the solar arrays or access to the solar arrays is as your town council has stated and I have stated, you need that significant, the monstrous public health harm, which clearly doesn't exist here. We could never have gotten through the planning board if one existed. We have fire department sign off, we have emergency services sign off, and we have sign off on the planning board. So it's just impossible to go and identify any such standard. So while I very much appreciate the public's commitment and enjoyment of the golf course, both its past and its present and the and the season, there is no future there. It's not a choice of what this board does between, there's not, there's not a choice between whether there's a golf course or whether this use variance is granted. That's not the issue before the board. The board doesn't have that authority at all. If Bellingham wants exercise sixty one B rights and things, they're gonna have that opportunity. Those public hearings could air out in front of the board of selectmen. And Mr. Connor will hear it with his, with the fellow members and they'll decide what they wanna go and do. There's no surprise there. They have that, they have that right and will deal with it as it comes. But that's not this board. And it didn't affect the planning board and it shouldn't affect this board either. So before you is a request for a variance to be treated the same as our neighbor, to be treated in accordance with the law, the attorney general's opinion, uh and the strict mandate of the statute. We would ask that it be moved.
So Andy, the planning board has approved this with conditions of getting a variance for the use, the act for access.
That's one of twenty one other conditions.
Right.
So just to clarify that.
Right.
Twenty one conditions and one of them was.
I didn't read all the conditions.
For this road, so our time here spent, I have to clarify it again, it's just for the use of the road. We have nothing to do with installation of the solar field. We have, we have no control. As the zoning board here, our control based on the bylaws is the control of the road, that's it. Can they use it to exit and enter? Yes or no? Can they remove the trees or can they place a warehouse or so on so forth? That went through the planning board and does not apply to us anymore, unfortunately. I I do, I totally agree with having green space and conserve conservation and and conserving waterways and 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 animal habitat, but this is not what we're discussing here, unfortunately. And I'm I'm adamant about about conservation, but in this case, we have to do what what we're what we're assigned to do here as the zoning board.
So say no. Say no. Just say no. The road, sorry.
Unfortunately, it meets our criterias. Uh, it meets criterias. I mean, we can try to be creative, but I mean.
There's still creation. It's you talking about public health and welfare here. Everyone's made a case. I mean, I'm not, not an environmentalist.
I'm sorry, but it's actually not, not in the zoning bylaw of the variance, but Mike.
Just Gabriel, to use the uh attorney's own words. Uh Lexington is Franklin and Walt fam is Bellingham. And in the tracer lane case, they said that they could not stop a solar project from going over their land because the Walt fam land represented one to two percent of buildable solar. And if we have seventeen percent other locations, that means we have the right to stop it. In my opinion. And I believe that is the opinion of KP Law. And I would very much like the town to have the opportunity to challenge it. Thank you.
If I could just clarify only sorry, this is Robin Stein again from KP Law, just to clarify and not to disagree, this is an evolving area of law, which I think everybody knows. You know, our opinion is that we think that seventeen percent is more than one to two percent, obviously. And so that it doesn't require you to treat your bylaws prohibitive, but we don't know what a court will do on a challenge to that number. To that number, so our our opinion is that. It, we recognize that it's a difference, we don't think you have to treat the bylaws prohibitive. We can't predict what a court will do just on an evaluation of whether or not that number is considered per se prohibitive. But it's our opinion that you don't have to presume it will be treated as pro- pro se prohibitive, a court might disagree. You know, with this area, literally every case that comes down changes how we evaluate these projects. And we are advising based on the case law available right now. Um, you know, and tracer lane definitely has similarities and that it involved an access issue.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I need you to go ahead.
No, that, because I just wanted to clarify that we can't give a definitive answer, obviously, about. What a court will say about that number, it's certainly different than tracer lane, but a- and we recognize that difference. But we obviously can't predict what would happen on a challenge. Um, but if there's a challenge, a court will decide.
John, I was just going to ask, and maybe this was done at the planning board level, but there's, is there any other way to access? The Franklin side of this lot, or is it just this driveway?
No, it's just, just the driveway.
Okay.
There's absolutely no access.
With all wetland and.
I was just gonna, but maybe Brian can answer, I didn't understand the legalese of the process. What exactly, is that kind of saying that she doesn't, the town council does not, can't clarify between the percentage difference? Whether that is something that has any weight, really, between, say, the one and two percent versus the seventeen percent or?
Well, I'll let her speak for herself, I think she's gonna say this. Nobody has a crystal ball. Whether or not any percentage would have.
So in tracer lane, the court said that the bylaw itself, absent a public health, safety and welfare reason. For only allowing solar on one to two percent of the property, was just considered prohibitive on its face. That 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 small amount was considered a prohibition that was inconsistent with chapter forty-eight, section nine, paragraph three. In Bellingham, you allow this by right on seventeen percent is the number that we've been given. And our point on that is that clearly that's a larger number. And so we don't think it requires the town to simply say, our bylaw is prohibitive and you can do this as of right. We think it's a number that's large enough to allow this board to review this project. And that where the town permits use variances, that's a good uh regulatory scheme to do it under. Because that is a clear avenue towards evaluating the project. Um, what we can't guarantee is if you deny this and you go to court, whether a court will agree or not. Maybe a court will say the seventeen percent is more like tracer lane or not. But we recognize and we believe that it's a significantly larger number. And so all we're saying is that we think, notwithstanding tracer lane, it's appropriate for this board to review the use of the. Private property for access to this project because it's not in a zone that's zoned as of right for solar. There's also ambiguity in how you apply the variance standard. Um, you know, in my mind, it's a little bit like when we deal with cell towers, not exactly the same. Um, in those cases, we often say, start with a traditional analysis, you know, would you grant this just under your bylaw? And if the answer is no, then you have to kind of take that next step and say, okay, well, do we have a valid public health, safety and welfare reason for denying it? Because if you would grant the variance and if you find the facts to grant the variance without even the special protections, there's no reason not to. But if you think, well, we might not grant this without those special protections, you do need to take them into consideration, in our opinion.
Thank you.
What I think, Mr. Chair, I think some important there is that regardless of your, the percentages, regardless of that argument, we have. Respectful disagreements about how you go and apply it, you still end up in the same place. Which is you look at your bylaw and you have to come to a determination as to whether or not there's a significant public health safety concern here. That would lead to the denial of the of the use variance. And that's where, while, you know, council said earlier on, kind of disagreed with me on our pathway of where we got to on the end result. That's the end of all of them. And there is no significant public health safety concern. Of using an accessway that's used now every day by the members of the public who asks you to deny it. They don't have concerns but using it to get to the golf course, there's certainly not a concern for less cars to go and use it to get the solar array. It's not changing in any which way, we couldn't have gotten the put through the planning board without it. We couldn't have gotten through the fire chief sign off without it. And since a demonstrable uh determination of this board of that significant public health safety concern. Then this board, he could be running afoul of the protection under the Dover Amendment forty-eight, three, section nine. So I think that's really the focal point of what the board is is looking at, the absence of that means. The use variance, uh, you know, should be, should be granted, that takes us to our request number two.
Yes, sir.
I I promise to be brief, uh, I will stay according to the vernacular in the swim lane here. Um, your challenge tonight is to determine whether or not access should be allowed. We're talking strictly about the road. The elephant, the rumor, however, is this impact. And I I believe if you asked everybody in this room if we voted, whether or not they are very um convinced. That there is no substantial impact, both from an environmental or from a public safety example. That has been put out in the public, gone through, they've gone through every single question and answered them. I'm pretty sure you get a, you'd get a vote here where people would say they're not quite certain. So let me just, let me fi- finish by saying this, let's stay in the swim lane. You guys have an opportunity at this point to use what they're applying for as an opportunity to tap the break. That you can, you can put off, you can deny, you can do whatever you want. But once you say yes, would you say thirty-one uh conditions or twenty-one? Twenty-one conditions, so this is one of them, this the last one? Okay, so they got more to go through, which is fine, all I'm suggesting here is have to break, that's all, thank you.
Great, I saw you go ahead.
For me, it's. The roadway, are you gonna, what's gonna change about the roadway, what's gonna get affected by the roadway, are you widening the fifteen foot roadway? What kind of effects will that have on on the town of Bellingham? That's, that's what I, what, what really this application involves to me. Because I went through the planning board, the planning board was in charge of determining. All of the questions that everybody mentioned, this is not my job here today. As a zoning board member, so can you please just answer those questions regarding like gravelway?
I can't, uh, the 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 roadway exists and has exists for thirty, thirty-five years. Uh, it is proposed to remain as it is as part of this development, there's there are no widening. Changes to the.
For maintenance, who's gonna be removing snow or clearing it up?
I mean, it's still the same, you know, the owner of the land is responsible.
Okay.
So whoever the owner is is responsible, it's not turned to a public. Um, uh, a a public requirement stays on the private side, whoever owns the land has to maintain it.
And how how many vehicles, what type of vehicles would be processed?
So the amount of vehicles today, I don't know, but there's just quite a bit, obviously, under the the proposed development, it would be.
After construction, about four per year.
Okay.
Four vehicle trips a year and there would be pickup trucks.
Any utilities there that could be affected on your reason?
No, back in the water lines getting getting upgraded, the the water line that exists today is uh, it doesn't work. Um, so it's getting, getting upgraded.
Robin, if I could ask you a question. So Robin, our analysis is. The, to consider the public health and safety regarding. The use of the road. And is that?
Yes.
And that's it, just strictly the access in the road.
Yes, so, uh, yes, I mean, the part of the property that's in Bellingham is the road. And what's before you is the road. And so there are probably, I would imagine, and the applicant will probably speak to it more. Particular levels of use that a road to a solar project will have. So, um, you know, your, the questions may not just be about the use. For the road, perhaps it's also what it takes to get this road into use it for the solar project, but I think those are the kinds of questions that. Um, you know, I would expect, you know, the applicant to to talk about. You know, I I don't, I don't know what type of improvements are proposed or changes or what have you, they may be able to speak to that. But your focus is on the use of this road for access to that proposed project.
And there's no consideration for the impacts of where this load, this road may lead, right, we don't.
The actual project is not before you, you're regulating the access in Bellingham.
So our.
Knowing that the access, for example, to a solar project, not to a three hundred unit apartment building, right, that might have different impacts.
So our analysis is strictly. Access on this road, does it create a public health or safety concern? For the use of this road in and out, regardless of where it goes, but the use of that. Um, access point, that is our analysis.
Yes.
I I have one question for the applicant, so. A few people have mentioned concerns about there being issues. On the actual solar farm, which then Bellingham Fire and Safety or whoever would have to respond to. How often are there emergencies at solar farms and what types of emergencies are there? Are there any?
We've never had an emergency in, I've been in the solar industry for eleven years now, so I've never seen one happen. Uh, they're extremely rare, um, the only emergencies that could. Be directly happened are at the arc, which is at where the inverters are. Um, the fire department had us put a fire hydrant there in case there was any kind of sparking fire. They also shared with us that this has been a really big hotspot for them previously, so they've had. Medical issues, vandalism, break-ins, they've been at the site quite a bit over the last. One or so years and I suspect they'd be at it never. Um, going forward, so, and we did pay them, obviously, donate some money to the fire department. Um, so if there is a particular sort of electrical fire, they felt like they needed to upgrade some equipment to deal with that. And so we were happy to pay for that.
Company's also providing training to the fire department with respect to the equipment and access that was part of the planning board decision as well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, no, I I think I agree with the sentiment of the rest of the board, I mean, I hate to see, you know, I hate to see the golf course leaving and obviously. Like you said, Peter, I hate to lose any green space and all those trees and, um. That's not, unfortunately, what's before us and this, the owner is selling. And it seems, um, maybe that's part of the trend, I mean, obviously, the other golf courses have gone and. I'm not a fan of all the development around in Bellingham either, but that's, we can only be guided by what criteria we have to assess. And right now, yeah, it really is just the road and the impact.
I bet you the truth to a few golfers, my seat losing right away, they hit a few times. Go right ahead, sir, in the back.
Uh, Renee Thompson, uh, Crestwood Drive in Ashland. Um, I was at the Franklin meeting and I thought I overheard the development of the property. To a solar farm, but I thought I heard some inclusion about a dog park or walking trails. Or something along those lines, once it was built.
Can you? Sure, that's not happening, there was a, uh, the, there's a parcel between one and and three. Uh, which the solar array is not expanding upon, so. Uh, Franklin had some desire to have some walking trails and some other things, uh, but that. Is not something uh that we can deliver, uh, whether it's something at the planning board. Uh, Bellingham, the group was really interested in wanting to, so, there's nothing, there's nothing happening there.
So the follow-up is, the solar farm gets built. The variance, the variance is granted, the solar farm gets built, ten years from now. Somebody wants a dog park in there. Does the roadway have to be voted on again because?
And I, and I can answer that question with this part of my, what I was just about to ask the same question. Um, and again, I know I've asked it four or five times tonight, you access the lot one. For this, the use variance. How will you access a lot three?
It it goes right through one.
So you, so it is lot one and three?
It goes, it goes all the way, all the way.
Right. And I, and I, I would, if we were to vote on this tonight, I would have a very tough time including lot two. Where we don't know what's going into lot two. Because literally, you can put anything in lot two at this point in time.
What's before, what's before you tonight, what's before you tonight's parcel one?
Okay.
The planning board did.
Yes.
Make a condition that we couldn't.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna, it's gonna all be.
Fun condition, a lot two.
Parcel two cannot be utilized absent going to the planning board and file a petition to getting a vehicle, so, there's nothing to be worried about there.
And same as the, uh, this one eighty-five, this roadway will be gated off for trespassing? Will this roadway be gated?
If I could just ask a clarifying question. Town meeting voters stipulated that the property in question is commercial and our bylaws. Do not allow access to industrial property via commercial. It's not about the road, it's about crossing the land, however you may do it. So before you vote, I would ask, are you asking yourself the right question? Are you applying the bylaw that says you can't cross commercial into industrial? It's not about what's going to be there. The bylaw simply says what you can't do.
I think it's suburban. It's the same, same, yeah.
I believe all the property on Maple Street was.
Yeah, that was, um. That was hell lock, that's still suburban.
Doesn't allow to go to.
Yes.
Not about what's there. Why we're going to, if you're going to go against the bylaw itself. It would be interesting to see what your reason is because it can't be because they're building solar. Because they said, whether it's, it may not go through. Thank you, and I won't ask any more.
I I have a question, what kind of hardship would you have, should you not be get, uh, should this variance not go through? What are your other options, finding another road or what, how would that affect you?
No, so in our view, this fits right within the Lepetus case that we cited to the city of Brockton, which was a similar situation. Um, town had an access way, different zoning, leading to another town that had different zoning. And effectively, the denial of that, of that access precluded the full use and enjoyment of the other property in neighboring town. And the S J C said, said there, no, the variance had to have been granted, so then the board denied the, or denied the variance. And the court came through and said, no, couldn't, we couldn't resolve this four different ways. One, the board should have granted the variance because you'd be denied access to your other, to your other property and it just would constitute a property deprivation. And like, the board didn't do it, then he had about three other legal avenues to the courts to go and do it, and they did, they granted it. So here, we we made the same argument that if we were denied the access that currently exists. Again, we're not building like trace, you know, building like tracer lane, we would be denied access of our, denied the right to utilize. Our property in Franklin, we could violate them of the law.
And I just, I want to go further, actually, we hold all that against the same standard for variance.
Right.
Um, two point twelve, B, one, two and three. We kind of need to address all of how, you know, you just talked about your hardship, but. There's a whole, there's three criterias for getting a variance in this town. And we take them very seriously because the variances don't go away. It, they, they're permanent, they're forever, so we we take, do take that very serious.
The only thing I would add is that they have to be evaluated within the context of forty-eight, section three, paragraph nine. Which again is what takes you to the ultimate question of identifying that significant public health risk and problem. Is that you cannot analyze this request for a variance with total exclusion. Of the protections of the Dover Amendment, it fits in. So as Attorney Einstein said, whether you start at the Dover Amendment, paragraph nine. And then work your way to those elements, or you look at those elements and you say, how does that fit within the overshadowing of the Dover Amendment protections? You still get there no matter what.
It would help us if we can still hit them.
Yes.
At all three.
And in 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 the case of Lepetus, it's hard, right? Because it's not a case where you have the soil and the topography and all of those things, but what the court said. Is if you deny the access from one community. From one community and there wasn't access otherwise to go utilize the property. No, it was not a proper function of zoning by that neighboring community and it triggered. The requirement to find the variance standard met. Regardless of how you specifically parse those, those elements. But it's a reason why I gave you the arguments number one, two, and three. I don't wanna get into the academic of Dover Amendment. But you can't view this. To the exclusion of the Dover Amendment. It's extremely, extremely important. And it lays the framework, how you have to look at it, and it re-tricks very much. What you could look at, what you consider, what you have to find in order to deny this access to you.
I'm just saying, we're, we're happy to go through the three. I know it's part of your process. And despite what Peter's saying, which is true, I wish we're so fine to go through this.
Just if I may ask.
No, the right answer.
Is it not possible to petition the Army Corps of Engineers, the owner of the abutting property in Franklin? To gain access. It may take ten years, but it still is an alternate option to accessing through Bellingham.
We talk will come up four ninety-five?
No, right through Franklin. The property in question is through the Charles River Waterside Association and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It's wetlands. But it is Franklin property that they could have to cross. It would take a lengthy process, but. It is an alternate method.
Have you explored alternate methods or alternate ways to access the property?
Yes.
What would, what would, what were those alternatives?
Yeah, we were, uh, sorry if uh. Was it, was it, we saw if it was a easement from uh, the national of the other us, not LMP, but the other solar company. Um, but this is. What we need to go and access our property and we don't have to look any further than this project. This is how the property, this is how the Franklin property. Is utilized and accessed today. Nothing is changing. Access is safe and good and usable for the public today. It is good and safe and certainly not harmful and not significantly harmful tomorrow. Nothing is changing.
Just makes more sense to utilize an existing road than upsetting wetlands that we don't need to upset.
Which wouldn't be comfortable anyway, that the amount going through there, you'd never permit it. That's not, doesn't meet any criteria whatsoever from a permanent standpoint.
So I think if, if the applicant, it's your fault, but if it's um, the applicant's comfortable. And the public is comfortable and town council is comfortable at some point, we can close the hearing and delivery.
I think you.
Yeah.
Do I have someone zoom?
This is Robin again. The only I would say about closing the public hearing is if you're intending to. Review a draft decision with conditions, say at your next meeting. You might wanna keep the public hearing part open in case there's any conversation with the applicant about conditions or clarifications that you wanna have. Our recommendation is that you um, keep the public hearing open so that you can have that conversation.
Quite, thank you.
Did you wanna ask again if there's any comments from the public on Zoom?
Yeah, I see, actually, there's two people in the chat. Any comments on Zoom from the public? You want, unmute yourself? So, what do we take here, fellow board members?
So we're not closing the public hearing? Okay.
Yeah, discuss the debate. Uh, I would just send to the, to the board, just as a, we attached the planning board's decision on the north parcel. And I believe there's over twenty-nine. That we, that we went through over multiple weeks. Uh, and anything that relates to the actual use of the property, any protections, any concerns of it were thoroughly vetted.
And those, those were through public hearings as well.
Were through six months fully opened, but with respect to the decision itself, that expanded over at least two meetings, might have even been two.
And members of the public.
I can't say I tried to watch his brain, he played, passed through movies like good.
But yeah, this. But this board is about the zone use, whether we're entitled to it or, or whether or not all the other conditions associated with property. Are covered there, and if there's any concern about future use of the property, things of that nature. Expansively addressed in this, in the, in this decision.
So if the future use changes and they go through the process again with planning. Does that mean they, we need to come back for?
Now, the problem with the, the variance, at least the way I understand it, is the variance is their power. So, let's just say that the solar thing falls apart when we grant them the variance. We're granting the use variance for that road to access. Industrial property.
You, you can write the variance for, for a specific use.
For solar, and that's why we, we rely on forty-eight, section three.
That would there.
That's why we have town council. She will help, she's, yeah, Robin's right there.
Yeah, no, I think you can, the application is specifically to allow this use, to, to allow the use. Of the road to access this project. And I think that you can, if you approve the application, you can tailor your decision to this project and you can put language in. That, you know, says that if there's changes or modifications to the project or intensifications of the use, you know, that they would have to come back for a modification.
I don't wanna. Create a variance inhabit, you know. Fifteen warehouses back there that we didn't vote for variance for.
Yeah, exactly.
And so we, we covered our application so that that wouldn't be a, a possibility or a concern.
And then with, with, so the planning board had made similar conditions. Um, so imposing those conditions through this variance. Like your applicant, applications for parcel one. But if we apply by extension that this roadway is feeding into parcel ones and parcel three. I think we could also apply. Um, this to parcel three.
I, yeah, I think that'd be more of a discussion for the planning board, and then determine whether or not they wanna bring a condition forward or they can condition it subject to the. Use variance that we granted for one. But I think it would just make it easier. We keep the application that's before you. I see where you're going, and I wanna be practical about it, but I, I think that's probably a decision for the, for the planning board.
I suspect they might wanna do that.
I think we need to be careful too, because parcel three is still.
I guess, so I mean, and, and if we, and the, the access doesn't go necessarily to parcel. Two. But they, it, it could theoretically be used for parcel two. Some future date, if parcel two ever becomes something, right? Is that something that the applicant would live, could live with, that we condition all of these things? The only thing parcel two would ever be used for is if a public, Bellingham or Franklin wanted to use it for public use. There's no. Yep, and we're fine with that language, however you want it to look, that's. As long as it does the job for you guys, it's fine, fine.
I, I mean, I, I don't wanna get into, cause it was all discussed the planning board, but. Would that be prohibitive in the, the middle of your solar field, seven?
I mean, it's seven acres just sitting there with the Vernal Pool. It's a nice, nice land for. Whatever, but we don't wanna get sidetracked, and that's the problem. We tried to do something nice and if we came out red herring.
I, I think we need to stay on. Because parcel three is still, there's, we, we need to stay with.
So this will be conditioned strictly for lot one.
That's right now because we're still, there hasn't been any finality right now with parcel three, right? And the application was for parcel one.
Well, but let me add the aspect that, will you then go to the. Planning board and say, hey, guys, we don't need to go back to the. Zoning board to get a variance for parcel three, because we already have access, we already have a variance for parcel one.
No, the, the, no.
We might say that, but it's up to you.
We're gonna work together and you're gonna tell us. I mean, on the planning board, I went and said, hey, we, we don't need to come, we don't need to come to the. To the zoning board, to the zoning board of appeal, and we made our legal arguments. And the planning board, you know, disagreed, and we said, hey, we had a choice. We could go and we could fight in court over that application. Or we could work with the board to continue it. So we'll do the same for the planning board. And the planning board, at the end of the day, put the condition, wants us to come back here, we'll, we'll do.
Right, but things become appealable in different ways, right? Suddenly that condition is. Uh. Something that you think is onerous, and you're willing to appeal that issue because we already have that, why are you making us do it again?
This application gives us, would give, would, would grant us or confirm to us the right to utilize the driveway. To access the parcel one project. It does not grant us parcel three, because I haven't, we haven't presented that. So we would discuss to the planning board whether or not that second exercise would be needed, would be helpful, and we would figure it out together.
That would actually be false, even though we condition of, I don't know, we condition of parcel one, it's parcel one only. It seems.
I mean, this is, this is not even, if you want to do a condition, it's fine, but the parameters of what I put before you. You can only give me everything that I've, I've asked for, and all I've asked for is the ability to utilize the existing driveway. For the pro, for the north parcel and project one.
Yep.
So if you say yes to everything we've asked for, that's what you've given me. I haven't asked for, 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 for anything else yet.
So, Robin, am I, should I just stay in my lane, so to speak, or? Should we not consider? Conditions related to three and two and. Because we'll address those at some future date or may address those playing order. Should we just stick with one?
Well. I mean, all that is before you is parcel one. That's all that's been asked for. So. I, you know, I think you evaluate what's been asked for, which is parcel one. And if you think there are conditions that need to be placed on that for future safeguards, then you can. Put those on, right? So for example, if you're concerned about this, you know, use for the future for parcel two. You could have a similar condition like the planning board had in its decision, right?
And for three?
You know, I, I think three gets a little tricky, and I don't think that the planning board, when they issued the parcel one decision, said anything about three. Practically speaking, if you say right now. It can't be used for three, then. Not only will they potentially have to come back for three, they're gonna have to come back and modify this. So, you know, you, I think you could say all they've applied for is one, and that's all that we've granted, and we're explicitly saying something about two. How you wanna handle three is probably something to think about, but if you explicitly say this, you know, can't be used for three.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that. I'm just trying to think that. We condition this variance on the uses not changing or intensifying for parcels one, two, and three. That was my train of thought, that if we can, if we can do that in one fell swoop. Similar conditions with the planning board.
Well, you can't grant. You, you can't grant relief as to parcel three under this application because it hasn't been applied for.
All right, but maybe for just one and two.
The applicant, for whatever their reasons, has decided to file completely separate applications for the lots, which makes it a bit complicated.
Okay, thanks.
So we, we'd only be doing it for lot one. For the. Just pro reduce, not that.
Yeah, then no intensification and no.
No use change direction.
Is there an urgency to make a decision tonight and not consult with council one-on-one? Offline, because I don't, I don't believe that the discussions that you are having with council need to be in a public setting. If you defer and just continue the meeting until next month. You have the latitude to vet any concerns that you each have individually with KP Law.
So, Robin, my understanding of executive session. Um. Is, is there need to be pending litigation?
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to have an executive session to discuss this. If there's. Things that you would like us to look at, that you're currently discussing publicly, we can certainly look at those and report back on them, you know, at another meeting. But um, you know, we wouldn't have a basis to discuss um, as a group offline. But we can certainly go take a look at the logistics of this, and then, you know, if you wanna continue your deliberations at another meeting, or we can even. Put, you know, the, the outline of a decision together if that helps with your deliberations. I do wanna remind the board, you know, there is a hundred day. Um. You know, time period in which to act on a variance application, so I do want you to be mindful of that, but. Um, my understanding is this was filed in early February, so certainly if you're gonna, you know, does the board meet again in April?
No, we don't meet again until May second.
Mr. Chair for me? The board received a confidential, insane confidential um. Uh, opinion from town council. We've talked about it expansively this evening. Town council, and I, we've discussed this openly in front of the planning, in front of the, in front of the planning board. Uh, town councils had my brief, and we conversed it together. There's, the sale on this property is not imminent. Have a number of things still to go. We still gotta go through a sixty-one B process in Franklin, Bellingham. I have the standoff season, there's, you know, other way, but we need to go and. Uh, complete the, the process. We spent several meetings before the planning board. Talking about a lot of stuff that went outside of the, the purview. It's a while to kinda bring it back in. And um, it's been burdensome. And costly and, and expenditure of resources by both the town as well as the applicant. I think all of the information's been said. The issue is, is quite clear. The scope is very limited. Um, I'd like to see the board deliberate and uh, press them forward towards a voter decision.
I don't have any more questions.
I, I think it's clear to me. I mean, I think um, as much as I might not like it, it's not fair to grab your feet. You know, just because you don't. There's, I think it's pretty clear what the purview is in front of me, so I don't really have any other.
I'm in the same, same boat. No more questions for town council, council in this case.
Guess that's why we're a democracy. Guess that's why we're a democracy, huh?
Yes. Um, what we could do, and I think is what town council suggested, is that we can ask. Um, that a decision be drafted and we review and prove it the next meeting. And that would be the best way to go about it. Kind of a draft decision and not close the hearing yet. What we do.
Yeah.
Not close the hearing, draft a decision, and then review it in the next meeting.
We'd have to.
And, and make a decision there.
You'd have to determine what. What you want to put on the decision.
Right, I think that would give us time to determine those, and if anybody wants to go through town council and. Clarify what we can do, that would be beneficial. And that can continue in the main.
I'm gonna actually probably recommend that we have town council help to draft this. I mean, you know, she's listening intently. And this, because I just think it's an important thing that town council drafts for us, and. I just think we need to have her do that. She's here, and that's what we pay them for, but that's up to the board to decide.
And, yeah, and that's if it is to be approved, we're still not. At least we'll have a list. Uh, motion to. Town council draft a, a list of requirements for the zoning board.
What would be requirements? It would be um.
Conditions, conditions.
Should base our conditions.
Yeah, draft the conditions uh. To, to base our decision in the next uh, meeting in May.
So can I clarify?
So just, just to clarify though, as, as town council, we're not, we're not in a position to. Determine like policy decisions, you know, we can certainly. We, we can certainly put a format of a draft decision together for you to review and you to fill in, you know, particular findings and what have you, but. Um, substantive type conditions would be something that would come from the town or from the board. I can work with Amy on that, but that's not something that would come from us.
Right, more of a recommendation rather than drafting it itself. Right, more of a recommendation rather than drafting it itself, please. I think, I think what your motion might say is that uh, the decision be drafted. I mean, how it gets drafted, we don't necessarily have to specify, but if a decision is drafted, it's subject to the. The conditions and things that we discussed today.
Right.
And that for our review uh, at the next meeting.
Yes, that is what I meant. You just words what I.
That is the motion I would like.
We have a second on our motion.
Second.
And there's discussion. Do you need to extend the decision deadline?
No.
If February for our next meeting is May, are we still good?
We're still good.
Let's just have Amy verify the, the filing.
Time stamped on February twentieth.
Okay, so that's.
It's gonna be close.
March, April. Yeah, we have twenty days. Seventy-two days. That's what it is. You still have twenty-eight days after, twenty-eight.
Trying to math my fingers.
Yes. Any other discussion?
I should be back here on May.
I will need a motion to continue. May second at seven.
Amy, sorry, will that be by Zoom and in person as well?
Yes, by Zoom and in person, yes.
So, May second at seven?
May just double check.
Sorry, it's a little hard for me to hear sometimes.
Yes, it's May second. Yeah, May second, so it's May second. I mean, if you guys wanted.
Okay, thank you.
We can't, the next one, the planning board, so we, it will be May second. Yep, May second. Thank you for coming. Okay, and vote on that, May second. Okay, we have two more items.
Alright, have a good night everyone, thank you.
Um, quickly, I just wanted to give everybody an update on Lakeview Estates. They were typically trying to build tonight to do a bond reduction, but um, what's gonna be happening is we're gonna have some staff along with their. Engineer go on site to make sure that their punch list items that they said that they were completing are gonna be complete, and if not. You know, then we'll address it, so um, that will take place. And the only other thing is the minutes from Laura, those are from, that from December, so if you guys could take a quick look at them. So is there a motion? Okay. You're okay with them, they're, we're good on them online.
Motion to accept the minutes as they are.
Second.
Second.
Bye.
Bye.
Great, and then that is it, the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.